I didn't have a gavel. Must not be a gavel.
Nan?
Call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and the right, indivisible, and ever to be produced as well.
Hi, nobody signed up. Vicki, thank you very much. I'll move on to approval of the minutes of February 5th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second. Board member Parker, board member Ryder, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to approval of agenda, do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
I have a motion, a second. Board member Baker and board member Parker, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. No new conflicts of interest represented to the board. Onto 7A through C, approval of consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
I have a motion, a second, by board member Ryder, board member Parker, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Sorry. Good question. Reports of the president.
That they are recommending accreditation for the next eight years. Now, the process is that that has to go to an evaluation review panel, and that will happen in June. And then, assuming they approve it, it will go to the board governors in October, so we won't know for quite a while. But we're assuming because usually if they find us in compliance in all six standards, then we are pretty certain that we will get accredited. We can't advertise that, of course. So several things that they cited as strengths were the student resources and support that students receive, things like loner computers, they were really amazed by that, the student success advisors that all students have. Another strength was partnership with Huron. And then another one was the excellent simulation facilities at both the Sioux Falls campus and in Huron. There were some areas of development, of course, but they didn't find us in non-compliance in any areas, which was a huge relief. So I just want to commend the RN team, they've been working on this. We've been working on the self-study. We got to produce 200-page document, and we've been working on that for a year. And so the team really pulled together and did an excellent job, so.
Thank you for your hard work to get there, and good luck. I'm positive you will get the eight-year accreditation recommendation. So that's a lot of work on the front end, but it will save you on the back end.
Yeah, yeah. So we hope to go for accreditation for LPN. Hope to get our initial accreditation for that in three years. So again, that will be a lot of work on the part of the team, but it's best for the students that we be accredited and best for the school. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Very exciting.
Do I have a motion to acknowledge the ACN review of the RN program report?
So moved, second.
I have a motion, a second, by board member Baker and board member Parker, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next board report.
Hi, good afternoon, President Mickelson. Thank you for letting me come in today and the rest of the school board members. I was asked to come in and report on the Generation RX grant that we at Southeast Tech were recently awarded. My name is Chelsa Reich, and I am a student success advisor at Southeast Tech. A large part of my position is coordinator of student activities, and I also serve as co-advisor for our student government. So I'll talk a little bit about some activities and things that we have coming up here soon for this grant that I'm really excited about. Oh, there we go. Okay, it's back. All right, so this grant is called the Generation RX Grant. It was provided to us by the Department of Social Services and Division of Behavioral Health to address the opioid crisis here in South Dakota. So the main goal that we want to provide to our campus is really providing education on opioid misuse and abuse prevention to our whole campus community. The timeframe is fairly short, but it is February to May 2020. So we just got our contract, and everything is good till May 2020. We're hoping to get it extended to September 2020. That's kind of in the talks and hoping they can provide us with some funds to extend maybe some things over the summer. We don't have a ton of, you know, student activity over the summer, but back in August and September we do. So that would be nice to extend it. So I'll talk a little bit about the events and things that we have planned for the next months to get this rolling before the end of May. Some of the things that we have planned right now, we just had a documentary on campus that I'll explain in a little bit here. We have some tabling events that we're planning, peer-to-peer presentations, and then a campus speaker at the end of the month. So this was our first kind of big kickoff for the grant that we just held on campus last week on Wednesday. We had a documentary showing of a documentary called Warning, This Drug May Kill You. And so we wanted just to kind of show something that was very real life, that the students could relate to, and something that was very interesting for them to come watch, gain some professional development, as well as just some really good information on this topic that can be, you know, once they first hear about it, they may not want to learn about this, but I think if you put it in a documentary setting, they're more apt to learn about it. So this documentary was an hour long. It really offered just a real-life look at the opioid crisis in the United States. And it featured four families that had either themselves with addiction or family members. So it dealt a lot with some heavy stuff, you know, there was death involved. But I think the students, I had them all fill out a survey, and we got really good feedback from that, really good learning experience for them, especially a lot of programs came to it, like law enforcement, health programs. So it really fit a lot of programs that we have on campus to educate them on things that they will see in a real-life setting. So that was really good. I handed out informational materials. We received a bunch of materials that we can use for events like this. And so we're getting more in the mail, or should be shortly here, to use for our upcoming events as well. We showed it four times throughout the day. The hardest part of planning things like this, it seems like, is never knowing the right time to plan something on campus to work around all students' schedules and class schedules, and so faculty and staff can come. So we just decided to offer it four times throughout the day, and hopefully students can hit one of those times. So that worked really well. We had a good showing at each of those, and all of them together, we had over 50 people attend. So I thought that was a good for the first time doing something like this. Part of our tabling events, so as I said before, we received a shipment of items, just informational materials, brochures, posters, some freebie-type things that we can hand out to students and employees when they come to events, and just kind of tabling at big things. So what we're planning is to have a table to give away these types of things and provide information at our big upcoming events for the spring semester. So one of them is student government meetings. We know we can hit a lot of students right there. And they can also take things back to their program area to educate their own peers on this stuff as well. Commons area of the buildings, the high-traffic areas on campus, like our food service, that kind of thing. We have a hypnotist big event and a car show in April that we're gonna hold things for. And that car show gets a lot of community people as well, so that'll be good outreach. Catch the Wave Conference, that's a conference we have at the end of the month on campus for students with disabilities. So we'll set up a table there. Also, our AAR Days, which are academic advisement and registration for the incoming students for fall 2020. That starts April 3rd, so we'll have some of those in April going on that we can use this app. And then any club events that student clubs are doing, any student organization events that students are holding, we're trying to reach those groups and ask if we can set up a table to just reach as many people as we can. Okay, so a big part of this grant is the peer-to-peer presentations. So one of the things that the state would like us to do is use our own students to educate other students, which I think is great. So one of the things that we did, we received a website that we go and kind of look over information. There's videos, quizzes. So our task was to go through, look up all the information, kind of train ourselves, and then figure out what students, what would be relevant for them, what do they want to hear, what would be interesting for them to see. So myself and my colleague Elizabeth Harder, we went through that and trained our own SGA executive members. I know a couple of them were here in December, I believe, presenting, so they really liked that opportunity. But we trained them on this information, and so now they are gonna go out and deliver these presentations. Their first one is on March 18th at our student government meeting. So I think it's a great way for them to get up, stand in front of their peers. They are leadership among student governments, you know, so they're used to getting up, but they don't have to regularly do presentations. So I think this will be good for them to give information to other students. And then we're hoping that they can also go out to other places on campus, maybe some classroom presentations, if we can have instructors fit that into the curriculum at all. And then any student club, organization-type meetings, and also student housing. We know that student housing is a great audience. They have floor meetings already, so we can have our students go in and present to them on this information and how to properly dispose of medication, that kind of thing. So the last thing I'll talk about here is an event that I'm really excited about that we're having on campus at the end of the month. So on Tuesday, March 24th, at 7:00 PM, we are having a campus speaker. His name is David Brown, and he'll be in our hub auditorium, room 220. And he is a former, you know, addict himself. He is going through recovery right now. And he is really passionate on speaking to, especially to, you know, college-age students. But he's really passionate about speaking. He's been doing a lot of speaking lately as part of his recovery. And so he is going to speak to our campus, and I thought it would be nice so you could kind of put a picture with... You've probably seen these ads before on TV, if you're like me and watch Wheel of Fortune every night. They're usually on during Wheel of Fortune. So this is who will be on campus to speak to our students.
I was always working. I was a high-functioning addict. People didn't know.
Oh, here we go. Okay, got it to work. So you may recognize him. Like I said, he is part of the campaign for South Dakota.
My own family didn't know. I was always working. I was a high-functioning addict. And people didn't know. My own family didn't know. I had 13 surgeries in 18 years. Well, in every surgery, you're given opiates for pain. These drugs don't discriminate. It doesn't care who you are, how much money you make, because once they get their hooks in you, you have got the fight of your life. I lost everything. Family, job, friends. I had nothing. Lived in my truck. Something had to change. Finally did. When I went to rehab, I realized that I have an addiction. I have a disease. There may not be a cure, but there is a treatment. There's hope, there's strength, there's courage. All you gotta do is step up and grab it.
Okay, so, and this is also a site that we go to to view information and that we provide to students. If, you know, they know someone or they themselves want to go and find information, they can go right on here and find help. It's access to, you know, numbers and hotlines and counselors and things like that. So I think this will be a really good presentation for campus, and the community is also invited as well, if anyone wants to attend. So we'll start getting advertisements out for that. But this is kind of one of those things, I feel like if we can, you know, even reach a couple students, I think we're doing a good job, even though the grant is pretty short timeframe that we have to do, we still can do a lot within that timeframe to educate campus, since I think this is a really good thing. Especially, like I said before, our students, our exec members that are getting trained. Our president is a law enforcement student, so this is great experience for him and great information for him to dive into. Two of our students are surgical tech, they're in the health. We have a couple early childhood and a couple other ones in health programs. So this will be really great things that they can, you know, take out to the workforce when they are done and apply these skills. Any questions at all?
Thank you so much.
Okay, you're welcome.
For taking this on. I know in addition to whatever else you must do for students as your position holds, this is a great and very important need, obviously, and thanks for doing the extra effort to get the grant and provide this programming for the students, so.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me go.
When was your event? It was the 24th of March?
24th, yes. Tuesday, March 24th, 7:00 PM.
I think that we would be surprised at the number of people who do struggle with addiction. And working in healthcare myself, you know, I think hospitals and physicians and clinics are all working hard to reduce the amount that is prescribed. But that maybe doesn't help the number of people who have already, you know, become addicted for innocent reasons, like a knee surgery or hip surgery or, you know, whatever it may be. So I appreciate your efforts to really help people and that young age group too. You know, they maybe have played athletics or participated in events that, or been in a car accident and have had those innocent type of medical procedures and are at just as much of risk as anybody else. So thank you very much for the effort that you're putting forth, and it does make a difference. And like you said, one, two, three people, that's life-changing for them, so thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the report on Operation RX?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Oh, we get rich.
President Mickelson, members of the board, I feel like this is backwards.
It's just, I think it is backwards.
This might be a backwards report today. So just a couple points to bring forward to you. This is the financial reports runs through the period of July of 19 through January of, January 31st of this year. A little bit off sync. Usually I do a quarterly report, but it's kind of aligned better with what the last meeting was going on. It also brings kind of up-to-date the revenue through the first half of the year, so we can get a sense of that. So I'll try and go through some of the highlights that make up the numbers and many, many, many line items that all coalesce into what we see. So the first page of the report really is looking at cash balances as of December 31st. I'm just gonna go down to the bottom here. And so as of January 31st in the post-secondary and the other three funds, enterprise funds that we have, the overall cash balance is $4,087,300. So no brackets around it, so that's a good thing. But I think the other point to bring forward, if you look at it, they have presented here, but in the consent agenda, there's a trust and agency report that deals with the way we're kind of structured and how we handle funds. But there's two major sub-accounts in those trust accounts, EFT and the tuition and fees. And if you noticed in the January report, there's about $9.5 million in there that we're holding out at Southeast that haven't made its way over to the district general ledger yet. So that'll be working its way over the next month or so into the system. So when you go in and you look at the report next month, that cash balance should be significantly higher as you start to see that filter in. Our monthly expenses run right around $2 million or so. You should see a pretty big adjustment in that as we look at it next month. Now, the downside to that is that's gonna last us for quite a while into June as we go. So we have one more state aid payment coming, and then we'll have the spring tuition, or not the spring, the spring and summer. Next page is a summary of the full secondary fund. Really want to just focus on the revenue numbers under the January 2020 column. We're trying to take a look at those, and what that really is reflecting, especially in the tuition fees, is what's transpired the first six months of the year. So what's happened January through, or not January, excuse me, July through December. So when you look at as a percentage of the overall budget, you can see tuition's roughly at 49.5%. Fees are a little bit above half. Corporate adds is another story, and that'll start to pick up as we move forward. But one of the things I want to point out, just because we're at the halfway point on the revenue side, as I project out and kind of give a little bit of insight and look at the crystal ball as to where I think we'll end up is the end of June, we are probably not going to reach those targets, those budget amounts, on the tuition fees. It'll be close. Kind of early numbers that I crunched here a couple weeks ago, within a couple hundred thousand dollars tuition and fees combined. So it's not a material difference, but it's not quite going to achieve them. One of the things that happens is usually this spring, there's a decline in enrollment from where you go to fall and the spring. It's not totally beyond the realm of possibility, but we would have to have a record set in the summer to reach that goal. And by record setting, it's way on the extreme record setting to reach it. So we'll continue to monitor that. We'll probably see a little bit of melt through this spring term as students terminate and some adjustments to it. But overall, last fall, it was pretty minimal, so hopefully that carries into the spring as well and shouldn't have much of a negative impact as we move forward. State aid's right on track, even though it's not at 50%. If you remember, there's a single-dollar amount in addition to state aid that we're getting from the technology fund. I've been assured, not that the check's in the mail, but as soon as the session's done, the check will be in the mail. So we still have some additional funds coming in, so that'll pick up, and we'll start to see that approach that 7.4 or 5 million. We should be right on in that number. Other states gonna fall a little bit behind, and that's really related to the Jan Ed agreement in terms of what we get reimbursed for the faculty salary costs in those Jan Ed classes. Kind of take a backwards look and try to project where we're gonna be, and we're not getting that much in reimbursement. That just has to do with the courses that we're offering, so it's just a factor of that. I think in the '21 budget, that may be a line item that will change. I know we're in some discussions about kind of eliminating that agreement as it dates way back to, I think, 2005, and we'll start looking at some modifications to that. Should have a positive impact on the budget overall. Perkins, that's a reimbursement basis. We haven't done our drawdown yet for any of the expenses that were incurred, but that's on track. We can't really expend it, so we'll stay on track with that. ADE is another federal grant program, same type of thing. It's a reimbursement basis, and we'll stay on track with that. Grants and donations, you see a $620,000 budget in there. That's really related to the foundation support, as those funds are starting to come in. We haven't made a request for those yet, but we'll start to do that over the next couple months. First of all, we have to make sure we've done what we said we were gonna do so that they will reimburse us for those things. So that'll start happening. Other local, as I looked at this report, there's a mistake in there. There's some revenue that shouldn't have been counted as revenue. That'll self-correct next month when the Spring Bill Dakota Scholarship Funds came in and inadvertently got put into a revenue account that shouldn't have been in a liability account. Didn't catch it on this report, caught it on the next one. So that'll flip back around, and you'll see that drop by about $700,000, which is the amount that we received. But again, the local revenues were where we anticipated to be at this time of year. Questions on revenue? Maybe kind of split it out a little bit differently than what I'm gonna do. Expenditure side of things, there are elements of our expenditures that move with time. What I mean by that is we're seven-twelfths of the year complete with this report. There are expenditures that move very incrementally that way. Salary and benefits tend to be one of those. So you would anticipate seven-twelfths of the year is roughly 58.33%. As you look at our year-to-date expenditures in our wage categories, we're in the range. We're in the ballpark on there. You're seeing us fall a little bit below on the full-time wages. If you remember, when we built the FY '20 budget, we had factored in a salary adjustment, but that was really contingent upon achieving those revenue targets. So that's why you're seeing a little bit of a favorable variance there. If you look down, probably a better example would be, if I can grab one here that makes more sense. None of them are exactly matching, but that's why you're seeing some of that in there. Some of it comes with turnover, you know, the delays in replacing staff. You pick up some savings associated with that. So kind of going backwards, if I'd have factored out that increase that we built into there, you'd kind of want to look to see those wage categories being about 56.6%. That's adjusting for that salary increase in there. So we're a little bit ahead on instructional and support, a little bit behind on the administrative. But again, nothing alarming, nothing way out of range, nothing dangerous to consider there. Get down into the benefits, you look at the insurances, as typically is the case, we're gonna pick up some favorable variance as we get to the end of the year. Not everybody enrolls in what we project they're willing to enroll in. Staff comes in, those enrollments change, so we pick up some differences there. I'm gonna jump back up just a little bit. The early retirement budget is 591, 432. If you remember, when we built this budget, we put in a $500,000 lump sum, kind of anticipating who would retire at the end of this year as we end that early retirement. If you recall, the dispersment of it is a lump sum. It's not over a period of five years. So we threw an additional $500,000 in there as an estimate of what we thought would be. The deadline for submission of the early retirement was February 1st. As a result of that, we are going to come in a little bit better than what we anticipated. We built $500,000, and then it looks like we're gonna be right around $360,000. That's who's identified right now. Somebody comes in as a late retiree that would be eligible for it, that could move out. But I think we were pretty close to that $500,000, so that turned out favorably for us as we reached towards the end of the year. The other expenses, as you get down into the services and the supplies, these are things that don't always move exactly as one-seventh of the year or seven-twelfths of the year. Some things change, you know, advertising, as Megan does her campaign. Some things change, you know, advertising, as Megan does her campaigns, some of that's front-end loaded in our budget. You're in a fiscal year, so you'll see those expenses being higher. I'm sure she'll promise that she'll save it in the budget there. So, you know, legal expenses, that's just always an estimate of where we think we're gonna be. You don't try to project that or predict it. So, we're looking pretty good on that right now. Maintenance and repair again has some front-ended types of stuff, because there's maintenance agreements that we maintain that fall into this category. You pay for those upfront in the year. So those tend to shift that percentage higher in the year. I think as you get down and you look at kind of the overall operating account, you see the 49.93%. Again, if every expense moved, you would expect our overall expenses at this point to be at 58.33. So we're a little bit underneath that. And so that's a good thing. That's a positive thing heading into the rest of the year, the four or five months remaining. I suspect that will hold and we'll see some positive variances that should help us a little bit with some of the shortcomings on the revenue side of it. Expenditures on the capital side, obviously there's not much that's happened yet. Related to that, there's been a few equipment purchases through the Perkins, through the IT, some different components there that are happening. The big, heavy item in that is the construction, the vet tech and some of the other renovations. There's a meeting scheduled tomorrow with the architects as we're kind of finalizing the construction plans. We'll get that out to bed. Obviously, we're not gonna incur the whole 1.3 or 1.4 million in FY '20, so we'll roll some of those dollars over probably in September. I'll come back with a supplement based on what's left to be paid within FY '21. So, so we'll wait to see what happens with that. But, you know, overall, I'm not seeing anything that jumps off the page at the end surprises as we proceed through the rest of the year post-secondary. Questions related to that fund? I'll be quicker on the other three of those. Bookstore fund, not a lot to say there. That again is really a factor of enrollments. He's expanding his offers there. We're getting into more tools and supplies for the class where students were being sent off on their own to purchase that. So, that's why you're seeing some uptick in some of those overall sales dollars. You'll see that on the expenditure side too, when you get down into the items for resale. There's timing differences in the way that the revenue is reported too. So this doesn't show the spring term sales that'll happen. It'll show up next month. But again, no surprises there. When you look comparable last year to this year, you look at that net differential, yeah, it's negative now, but that's because you're front-loading, you're putting some inventory on there and buying that inventory that was sold. It's not reflected from the sales category. But when you compare it year to year, we're setting in a better position as far as some of those margins that we anticipated are winding up. So, no concerns there. Food service, a couple kind of highlights I want to hit up there. One is looking at the total revenues. You can see that we picked up, you know, $31,000 over where we were last year. Food service is being run by a different individual who's really done a good job of trying to draw students in, trying to reach out to surrounding businesses with product offerings and availability. And so she's done a good job at generating some foot traffic and getting people in there. So we're seeing tables full, we're seeing people utilizing services. So, hopefully that'll have a positive impact in the subsidy amount that we're gonna have to provide this budget built in, $85,000 for that. I don't know if we'll need all of it, but it'll be in a better position than it was last year. I think the other thing that's kind of critical on there, when you look at those increased sales of up $31,000, when you look at the cost of goods sold, purchases for resale, it's actually less this year. So, better inventory management, better control of waste and what's being done there. So, all good things. Shelley's doing a good job for us. So overall, when you get down to the bottom line, you're seeing a $23,000 differential over where we were at last year. And again, remember that this doesn't have, it's got seven months of expenditures, we're only six months of revenue. So, January would help narrow that gap pretty close, but as we get into the later months of maybe in June, we're gonna go the other way for a little bit. But again, a positive outlook as compared to where we were last year. Childcare center is tracking similarly as it's related to the revenue. So enrollments are the same and utilization of it is pretty much the same in terms of what it's generating revenue. One thing that's helping this fund a little bit is when you go ahead and you take a look, they've had some staff turnover, they've had some departures of existing staff, the replacement staff have come in, have not utilized the benefits to the extent the prior staff was. So that's a favorable outcome on the expenditure side of it. We're not incurring that fringe benefits load that we normally would. So, again, there's a subsidy built into this, but comparable to last year to this year, there's an $18,000 differential of to where they were at. So, hopefully that subsidy amount of $39,000, probably won't need all of that either in this fund. So, that's the soup and nuts of it, so to speak, of the finance aspect of it. Questions or comments?
There's some storage. Thank you for that update. Of course, we like to see that they're in a safe position and I know the team's working to get as many students in the door, taking as many credits so we can keep going.
Yeah, and that's always, you know, that's what pays the bills, because when you look at the tuition fees, obviously a credit-driven, and then our state aid is credit-driven as well, even though it's in arrears, it's still based off of those enrollments. And you heard Bob say that in "For enrollment, enrollment, enrollment." And that's an important thing to allow us to accomplish our mission is to have those dollars to do that. So.
I hope your food service area is ready for the new high school, because I feel like that, I think that that area will pick up.
We had parking meters, I think, would help. So, no, we won't do that. But yeah, I think it has that potential. Obviously, you have a somewhat captive audience and since there's not a lot of spaces around it, there's not usually a lot of time to be leaving campus and go seek out. And so, yeah, that's a, that's a good point. So hopefully your afternoons will start to pick up some of that revenue.
Do you have a motion to approve the finance?
So moved.
So I can?
Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. President Mickelson, board members, thank you for the opportunity to visit with you here again for a few minutes. On the agenda, I will provide a quick legislative update. There's a few bills that we are following closely, so give you an update on that. Before I do, again, though, I wanna, I just feel like, again, I have to thank these individuals because they have worked so hard. First, you know, Rich does an amazing job keeping us between the lines. And as you know, with higher ed right now, a lot of institutions frankly are dealing with 4%, 8% deficits, 18% deficits even. So, I think we'll, we'd like to be in a little better shape, but we'll take where we're at and we're building, which is the key. As a result of that building process, the reason we're building is because of individuals like our dean of nursing, Kristin Pacel. And she speaks quite humbly of the work of her work and the team. It's an amazing team. They do an absolutely phenomenal job of training nursing professionals. And it was, the best evidence of that, obviously, is this ACEN accreditation review. And if you've never been involved with one of those, I would, it's as close to an HLC comprehensive visit as you can get. Four evaluators, four nursing evaluators, which says something. They're very detail-oriented and is a comprehensive visit. So the materials, as Kristin mentioned, took over a year to put together. And it was, and sure, Kristin acknowledged, it was just not only her, but the other team members and Jackie Kramer, Stephanie Entinger, Sarah Lees, Myra Workmeister, and Chris Tabey, who is up in Huron. So they did an amazing job. So thank you all for that. And then also, Chelsa is here. Thank you, Chelsa, for her work in terms of going out and really going above and beyond in terms of pursuing the grant and then providing that opportunity now for our students. But I I think that's why, as an example, in the ACEN report, student success was noted as a strength of the institution. And it was because of Chelsa and her colleagues and and others that worked so hard supporting our students. So, as far as the legislative update, we're in the final couple of weeks now. I think there's two weeks left in the 2020 legislative session and there's a flurry of activity. The big news for us, obviously, was last week when Governor Kristi Noem signed HB 1083, the name change bill, allowing the technical institutes to change our name to technical colleges. So that's, that's quite exciting, obviously. Representative Hugh Bartels from Watertown and Senator Jim White from Huron were the prime sponsors of that bill and a number of other senators and representatives signed on to it. So we're excited about that going through. Another important piece of legislation, though, frankly, that we're watching closely is SB 142. And that was introduced by Senator Brock Greenfield related to dual credit. And the last time I think I was here, we talked briefly about this, but the original version of 142 would have limited dual credit funding only to general education courses. That was just amended this week. The amendment now, I think it struck the language related to the general education courses and instead quit, inserted remedial courses. So dual credit funding will not be able to support remedial courses, which, which doesn't impact us at all. And I don't think it impacts other technical institutes or border regions. So I think the legislature is setting some parameters there on where they want to see that funding go. Another piece of legislation, though, is SB 144. And that one, I just got an email on it this morning. Nick Wendell from our office, the director of the State Board of Technical Education, talked about in terms of the potential of that bill limiting funding for dual credit. So, right now, in the email that Nick sent out this morning, he said, "We are looking at, obviously, opposing any limitation on the level and amount of funding, because the cost of the program already limits participation among students from lower economic backgrounds. And if you reduce that funding even more, I think that's gonna create a higher bar that many, many students that frankly would benefit from that opportunity won't have it." So, so we're, the technical institutes will be opposing that and I think also the border regions institutions, but that's the that's the latest one that we're watching. And the last one I wanted to mention was HB 1069, which is a bill offering free tuition to veterans. It passed actually earlier this week in the Senate Veteran and Military Affairs Committee. And it's on the consent agenda for the Senate. So it looks like that's gonna go through as the technical institutes were supportive of that bill. So we'll see what that does. The question mark we have there, though, is whether or not there'll be state funding to assist the technical institutes with the free tuition piece of that legislation. So, that remains to be seen. So, that's the update that I was hoping to provide. One thing I would like to have you do, if you would, as far as the name change bill, is to acknowledge support and approval of HB 1083. And that would be for, we will be sending off a letter to the Higher Learning Commission later this week in terms of advising them of the name change. And we'd, obviously, you have been supportive of it, but we'd like to get that on the record and then submit that as well as evidence of the support we receive.
Do you have a motion to approve the name change bill HB 1083 and allow the name from technical institute to technical college?
Move to and support.
Second.
A motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
All right, thank you.
Is that it?
That is, that is all I have.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much to everyone at Southeast Tech for all your work and session's almost over, so hopefully we'll be safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Do you have a motion and second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.
Thank you.